To the Howard's Zoning Board of Appeal. The date today is April 25, 2018. And the purpose of the hearing and hearings here will be to listen to the petitioners, who are either coming before us for purposes of special permits or variances in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Mass General laws and in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Howard. First, I'd like the members to introduce themselves, please.
Dean Hederstedt.
Al Donahue.
Mike Capollion.
Megan Mayhew.
I'm Jim Hilliard, and I'm acting chairman and...
Shayla Delaney's secretary.
Thank you. The, um, this meeting will be videotaped, Channel 18, I believe, which is a local channel. And you can get there, for those of you who are listening, you can get there going through YouTube. With the clerk, please read the notice.
Case number 2018-05. David M. Harris, through its, through his agent and architect, D. Michael Collins, has applied for a variance to demolish and rebuild a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling with an existing accessory building where the total building coverage will increase. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town on Howard's Section, I'm sorry, Table 325, Section 325, Table 3. Height and bulk regulation is set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, the properties located at 17 Neal Road, map 16, parcel S6-1A, in the RL zoning district.
And there are two pieces of correspondence.
There is one letter from James and Mary Judge. Dear Zoning Board of Appeals, we are writing regarding constructive, construction plans at 17 Neal Road, directly across the street from our homes at 6 and 10 Neal Road. We understand that our neighbors, the Harris family, are planning to build a new home. Their plans call for renovation of a structure in the rear right of the property. These plans apparently create a 1.5% overage in the building coverage allowance. Please be aware that the reference structure is barely visible from the street and neighbors. It is a charming vintage structure that is part of the original estate, it's only 320 square feet. To us, the most impractical, I'm sorry, the most impacted neighbors, the 1.5% overage in building coverage seems negligible, and we fully support the Harris' construction plan, signed with James and Mary Judge. The second is from the Town of Howard's Board of Health. Case 2018-05. I have reviewed the application for special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals for the project at 17 Neal Road. The applicant states that a new Title V septic system will be designed for the site. A disposable system construction permit is required to be submitted and reviewed prior to the building permit application sign-off. Should you require further information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Megan Eldridge, Health Director. Is the applicant here? Would you please come forward? Introduce yourself to the board.
Thank you. I am Michael Collins, the applicant's representative. And I, I have one other letter of support.
Sure.
Three copies of it here that I will enter into the record.
This is from David Fower, to the Zoning Board of Appeal. Dear members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, my wife Elsa Lisa King and I are the owners of the residence located at 20 Neal Road, Howard's Port. Our new neighbors, David and Anna Harris, have made application to you for a variance for their property across the street at 17 Neal Road that would allow them to demolish the existing structure and rebuild, resulting in a 1.5% overage in building coverage allowance. We know the Harrises and have been, have seen the architectural renderings of the new structure. We find attractive and appropriate for the neighborhood. We are supportive of the Harrises' application, as it will allow them to maintain and renovate a small structure in the backyard of the property. The backyard structure is barely visible from the street. It is a small vintage structure that is only 16 by 20 feet, or 320 square feet. The resulting 1.5% overage necessary to maintain the structure seems to us to be negligible under the circumstances. Okay, thank you. Do you have anything that you are going to use tonight that we are not, do not have copies of, that you want us to have copies of?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
There are, I have photographs, if that's necessary, on my iPad.
If you, if you think they're necessary, you can use them, or you can hand them to us at the appropriate time.
I have them electronically on my iPad.
Okay, all right, well, if they're necessary.
If we need them. I don't, I don't know that we will, but they're here.
So, you may begin.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. In the development of this project and in the situation that we ran into in terms of the overall lot coverage, it was first thought that perhaps we could go for a special permit on this project in consultation with the Building Commissioner and with Shayla and the Planner's Office, who were extremely helpful through three meetings, two meetings, three meetings, actually, I think. It was finally determined that our opportunity really was for a variance, based on, on the situation that we have. We have designed the house so that it is conforming to all setbacks now. It is, the house that exists is non-conforming on the northerly property line, and we are increasing that dimension so that it is now conforming. We are increasing the front yard setback that was conforming prior, and it is now conforming. The southern property line is decreasing slightly, this, excuse me, the southern right-side setback is decreasing slightly, but still conforming. The building itself is also conforming in terms of lot coverage at only 14.7%. The catch is that there is a, on the site plan, it's labeled garage. It's, frankly, it's a, it's a shed. And the, this property at one point was part of a much larger estate, and I, I don't know how many acres it was, but in the RL district, it could well have been five acres when it was originally created. This stretch along Neal Road has been subdivided at least twice, carving out smaller and smaller lots. So, the, there's, um, there's evidence of an old pool, pond-like pool out in the back, which has been neglected for many, many years, and a garden area that was all, I guess, part of that original state many, many years ago. This garage shed, it was probably a caretaker's cottage or something, it's hard to tell. It's set down way off the grade, it's down about six feet from street level. It's, as those butter letters indicated, it is not very visible from the street, there's a bit of the roof that you can see. And, but in the, my client would, would love to keep it, because it's a, it's a charming little building. It would be a shed for equipment, tools, garage, lawnmower kind of thing. And the, the footprint of that building at 320 square feet pushes the lot coverage up to 16.7. So, it's, it's a, it's 1.7% over allowable. You know, my argument is that this 15% lot coverage on a large parcel of land was and is very reasonable, but as this parcel has been chopped up over the years, and is now about 16, 18, 17,000 square feet, that we are essentially creating hardship because of the, the 15% lot coverage restriction. So, we are hoping that you can see that this is a very non-detrimental use, and certainly it would not be any detriment to the neighborhood if it were to remain. And we, we also realize that we could build by right if we simply demolish it. We would prefer not to demolish it, but I can certainly and will respect the board's decision, and hopefully make a path of decision prior to your decision.
Anything further?
Questions, if you have them.
Okay, Mr. Hederstedt?
Let me confirm your side back, your side yard setback. You were at 15 feet, you're now 21.8.
Correct.
That is a variance. It's not like you're, you were compliant, now you're non-compliant. So, that's not an extension of your existing, as far as I'm concerned, it appears to be. You are going past the allowed setback, even though you were conforming. That, that doesn't make you, the prior confirming, conforming doesn't make you a non-conforming in that particular area, but is now non-conforming, in fact, it's now, 21.8 is in fact above the required, and therefore, I think you are, are you not in variance?
The, the required setback is 20 feet.
You are now, you got, yeah, but your, your required setback is 21, is, is 20 feet or less. This is 21.8.
That makes it better.
I'm making setbacks better.
20 or more?
Correct. Current, current setback is 15, which is non-conforming. So, we've pushed the building to the south, therefore, making that side yard setback.
You are correct. I apologize.
No problem, thank you.
Let's continue on, however, to your, your building coverage increase. Could you please review for me what you consider to be the reason why we should grant you a variance underneath the requirements of the law?
My, my argument, whether you accept it and, and agree with it or not, is obviously subject to your decision. My argument is that the, the required building coverage for this zone, RL zone, is 15%. When this lot was created, when this original lot, the estate lot was created, it was a 50,000, 100,000 square foot lot, perhaps. I, I don't know what the original boundaries of it were. I do know that, that the Neal Road lots have all been subdivided at least twice. So, the 15% lot coverage on a, on a 16,000 square foot lot is, is more restrictive than it would be on a 100,000 square foot lot. And the fact that the, the lot had been subdivided, and the zoning, zoning bylaw and the lot coverage did not change relative to the size of the lot is, is an argument that I am making is, is created the hardship.
So, you think it's the size of the lot that's causing the problem, the hardship?
Based on how it was originally defined as a much larger lot.
Unfortunately, I think Massachusetts doesn't allow a variance because of the size of the lot. It does for the shape.
Understood.
But not for the size.
Understood.
And unfortunately, the shape of this lot is no different than many others. In fact, right next to it, I think, the lot is, the lots around it are almost identical. So, you don't meet that requirement, and it doesn't seem, you have not argued the fact that it has soil conditions or has a topography problem. So, from my standpoint of view, you don't meet the current requirements for a variance in accordance with the state requirements for issuance of such. However, I appreciate all the work that's done, but on the other hand, the lot, the house that was there before met the requirements, didn't need a variance, and the house that you still have, I don't think needs a variance. But with the additional building that you'd like to have, it does create the variance. That's my opinion.
The existing.
I haven't, is it yours also? That the, the additional, the old barn or the old house, or whatever you call an old garage, does that in fact create the, the variance requirement and increase the, the building coverage?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. So, let me ask you, do you have an argument that, that the soil conditions contribute to this?
Well, I, no, I can't, I can't make that argument. We are doing soil tests to, today, soil tests were done for the septic system. But no, I cannot make that argument.
There, there are three...
I'm aware of it.
The variance request is broken down into two major parts. If you can convince us that it's the soil conditions, topography, or the shape, and you convince us that, that that is causing you, in some respect, to have this 1.7 or 1.5%, then you have to convince us that there's a financial hardship or otherwise. So, you don't get to the financial hardship or the hardship until you first get to the fact that there's something with this land that is unique to the land, not unique to the neighborhood, but unique to the land. And whether it's 1.5% or 25.5%, it, it can't be a little bit pregnant. Once you hit the wall and you go 1% over your invariance land. So, do you want to give a try at the soil conditions?
I'm not going to lie.
No, 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 I, well, we have in front of us, I mean...
Yeah, and, and the fact is that this building exists.
Yeah.
This shed exists. So, I can't, I can't argue that. And, and the, the alternative is going to be to demolish it. We build the property by right, and we lose a, a, I'm not going to call it a significant building.
I understand.
But a charming building.
Well, you have two choices, though. You have the choice, A is to, is to remove the building. Choice B is to structure the house smaller.
And we have tried numerous times, as you can imagine. The geometry of the house, it, it's, believe it or not, 320 square feet to shave off the house with the geometry as it's designed, and I think you've seen the, the...
Yeah, okay.
...design. Changes the house significantly, it changes the mass. So, and the clients are in love with the house as it is. So, the former choice is, is unfortunate one, but it is very likely, given this, and I'm aware of the, the state's requirements to establish this hardship. My, my argument, as I said, is that because this was a, a large estate, these properties were carved out, they were subject to the, to a lot coverage requirement that probably would not be assigned to a 16,000 square foot lot. And that, and my hope was that this board would see it that way. But I, as I said, completely respect your decisions.
I, I think your presentation and all of your arguments behind it would make sense if this were a popularity contest, because you, it's, it's very positive. And it, in all due respect, I think it probably, you know, you should be able to do it, but unless and until someone can lay out both the soil conditions or the topography, the shape, so that we can get to the financial hardship, we can't get, well, in my opinion, I'm only speaking for myself.
Understood.
I don't think we can get there, but let's keep going. Mr. Donahue.
As I read your setbacks, you're going to go from 28 to a 30-foot front, so you're moving the whole new home back.
Correct.
So, you're going to have, you're moving it back basically five feet, give or take.
Two feet.
Two feet.
Uh, one foot, one and a half.
One and a half feet.
Yeah.
The property behind is a swimming pool.
There is a existing pool that's getting removed.
And there's a pond back there.
There's a, it's...
A puddle.
Yeah, it, it, it looks like a pond. It is, it was actually declassified as a wetland, because it had been completely overgrown. And the writer in Wilcox made a presentation, conservation, because of its size and the fact that it was, in fact, man-made as a reflecting pool. It's only eight or 10 inches deep. It is a, it is a puddle, I think is probably a better term, yes.
Now, the current septic system is in the rear. When the house is moved back two and a half feet, is that going to change the footprint of a current septic system?
Current septic system is a cesspool. I, I'm going to, I'm going to stay to this side of calling it a failed system. It is a working cesspool, but not what is going to remain. The soil tests that were performed today were to, and of all days, but were certainly to determine groundwater, if any, but more importantly, perk rates. So, there is going to be a new system. It's either going to be on the, in the front of the house, on the, on the right side, which is a southern property, or someplace heading towards the rear. So, the engineering firm is, is in process of designing that. So, the old system is being abandoned, to answer your question directly.
Does the installation of a septic system affect the topology?
Uh, thank you, it might. But because it is not yet designed, we should...
It's part of the conditions. All right, thank you.
Mr. Capollion?
Couple of questions. I'm with the acting chairman in that, to put it the way he did, you can't be a little bit pregnant, I like that. That should be our new zoning motto.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, I, I don't know if you, if you know Neal Road at all. I mean, I grew up walking down Neal Road to the beach from where I live, and it has been converted from what it used to be, a nice, nice little Cape Cod neighborhood, to what it is now, is all these old homes being torn down and little McMansions being plopped down on them. And I, that's why we have zoning laws, to, to make sure that it doesn't create a detriment to the neighborhood. I, I have an issue with you raising the, the roof. I know you had a couple of letters of support, but from my site views of, of the property, I, I would be more concerned for the people who didn't get the butters notices, for the people who were a couple of houses back, who have seasonal views of, of Nantucket Sound. So, they, they wouldn't necessarily have received the butters notices, but I would be concerned for them. Several times, you made references to the original lot size, but that really has nothing to do with this case. Whether or not it was pared down from a 500-acre estate to its current 16,898 feet is of no consequence to this case. So, I think those arguments are, are not...
There's no viewing requirements.
...of, of help here to you. I know that it says the proposed height is 29.7, but when you look at the drawings, the top of the chimney, which I assume is going to be a sizable chimney anyway, is going to be, is it 40 feet high?
Chimney?
Yeah.
Chimney will be, chimney's required to be two feet above anything within 10 feet. So, it will be 32 feet.
32 feet, so it's, again, just, it, it's just, it's a lot of house for, for a little lot.
It's, it's really only about 300 square feet larger than the existing house.
I, I had, I just, it's a beautiful, beautiful dress.
Respectfully, you, you, you are familiar with the street, and I don't disagree that there's been a great deal of change. And we worked very hard to design a house that felt like it belonged, so that it kept low, front porch, negative space. We pushed it back from the street. But again, I, I respect your thoughts and your opinion, and you can, I, I can argue why I designed what I did, but...
It's a beautiful house, so it's a, I'd live in it myself, but just not on that lot. One, one question about something you said. You said, you said the current garage is six feet under grade.
It's, it's, it's in the back part of the property. The property drops off about six feet. It is at the back corner of that lot, so from street, it is down, the floor of that shed is about six feet below street level.
And when you do the construction, would you propose that you were going to raise it up to street level?
No, it's staying exactly, it would, it would stay exactly where it is.
It would, okay. That's it for right now. I'll pass on to my sister here.
Ms. Mayhew?
Um, I just, I'm looking at the height, and I just want to, um, just clarify, on, okay, on, let's see, what page is this? On A32, in the cross-section, I just, wanted some clarification on the heights. So, all right, so the top of the roof line will be 29.7, above grade, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, then what is the cross-section? Why is that, say, 30? What is that indicating? Over to the left?
That is the height maximum.
Okay, so that's not indicating any...
45, correct. You can see that dash line runs above 10 inches.
Yeah, okay, that's what I, I just want to make sure that was what I thought it was, okay. Um, no, I agree with the rest of the board. I don't have anything further.
Anticipating the possibility of this, I, I think what I would like to do is, is withdraw the application without prejudice. We will, we will refile demolishing the existing shed, garage structure, and then move forward, building by right.
I don't know that you'd have to refile for anything, would you?
Well, we have to, we've been denied a building permit, so we would...
Oh, you refile for a building permit?
Not to you.
You wouldn't refile back with the zoning board?
I, I stand corrected, yes.
You'd have to come back to us.
Sure.
As long as I'm, I'm, I'm forming now with, with zoning, I will.
Well, I'd like to hold that request if, until the end, and then we can take a vote on it.
As long as it happens before your vote.
Of course. Are, are there any public officials here tonight who want to be heard? Anyone want to weigh in?
Not, just give a listen right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, fine, thank you. Is there anyone here in favor of the petition? Anyone here opposed to the petition? The petitioner has requested to withdraw without prejudice, the application. And what that basically means is, if he withdraws and we vote to allow him to do that, then the, the petition never took place, meaning there's no prejudice to it. If we deny it and go through with the vote, if the vote is in favor, he gets his, his variance. If the vote is against, he's got a two-year wait before he can come back. So, I will make the motion to allow the petition to withdraw without prejudice. Any discussion?
No discussion, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It was a very good presentation, I must tell you.
You know, we, we...
If we're a popularity contest, I'd run with you.
Yeah, we had to try, and, but I understand the, the requirements of, of zoning, and...
So, we don't need anything else.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We'll see you next month, by us on.
No, we won't be back here.
I won't be back, we'll be... You won't be back?
No, because he's, he's going to...
I've withdrawn.
They're going to take the barn, they're going to take that piece down, and now he'll be within the confines, because he's not, he's, he's increasing, he's decreasing his, his nonconformity.
Ah, yes.
By decreasing it, you can do that as a matter of right.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
He gets a special permit.
I may see you on another property around the corner.
No, you don't, you don't, if you, if you decrease your nonconformity, you can do that. Maybe he's, he's making this nonconformity better, not worse.
I tossed you my stuff.
He's going to get rid of the shed to begin with, to be honest with you.
I knew that, but...
Yeah.
It's a nice house, it's pretty.
Maybe he's still nonconforming.
No, everything he's doing is better.
The house lot is nonconforming.
That's why I say it's a popularity contest. That's why I say it's a popularity contest, he'd be home.
No, I think it's, isn't it, isn't it non-conforming?
The lot is non-conforming, it can't do anything. No, the, the lot's non-conforming, but, but that doesn't affect it, because the house he's putting up is not increasing the lot coverage.
No, I know that, that's a variance, but what I'm talking about is it's still a non-conforming piece of property.
That's right.
And so, under the non-conformity, doesn't he still require a, a special permit?
No, not unless he's increasing the non-conformity of it. And the building inspector, you know what's gonna happen? He's gonna go for his permit. The building inspector's gonna come, either say to him, "You can't do it without going back to the Board of Appeals," or "You can't." So, that's, that'll be the city...
Yeah, and the other thing he's gotta do is he's gotta go to, through...
That's right, Board of Health.
The septic system.
Yeah. Okay, the bewitching hour is here. Would the clerk please read the...
Case number 2018-06. Mark M.J. McGowan and Cheryl A.M. Howell, trustees of the McGowan Family Trust, through their agent, attorney William Howell. Have applied for a special permit to construct, in addition to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of Towahatch, 325, Table 2, area regulations set forth in MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 6, the property is located at 6 Rabbit Run, MAP 4, Partial S1-30 in the RH-1 zoning district.
Would the applicant please introduce himself, and if he has any witnesses, introduce his witnesses.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowell from Howatch Port, and I'm here tonight representing the McGowan Family Trust. Mark J. McGowan is seated to my rear. He's one of the trustees, and he's also the principal of MJM Associates, which is his building company. The property in question is located at 6 Rabbit Run, off of Shore Road in West Howatch, and it's owned by the McGowan Family Trust. Mr. McGowan's mother currently resides in the property. And she is getting older, and her health is frail, and Mr. McGowan and his wife plan to live in the renovation, the addition that we're proposing for you tonight. If you look at the certified plot plans by Moran Engineering, it shows you very distinctly the proposed addition will be to the rear of the property and on the second floor. There's a grid located at the top left of both of those plans. If you look at the proposed conditions plan, it shows you that there will be no change to the front, rear, or side setbacks. When you look at the existing house, the rear setback, you see down at the deck, it, it shows 10.3. And so even though the existing house is 14.2 from the rear sideline, and will, the addition will reduce that a little bit to 13.5, it's still not closer than the 10.3 of the deck. So, he's not, in effect, not coming any closer to the rear lot line than the existing structure. And he's not changing the front setback, which is 33.6 from the road, so it meets the 25-foot requirement. And the side setbacks to the north are 20, 20.8, where 20 is required, and 28.4 on the other side where 20 is required. The building coverage will go up slightly from 15.8% to 16.9%, but still well under the 30% maximum. So, we don't have to worry about the rabbit dying in this case on this road. But, site coverage is existing 27.3%, goes up slightly to 28.4%, but well under the 35% maximum for site coverage. When you review the building and elevation plans, on the first floor, nothing is changing. And that's basic, basically where Mr. McGowan's mother resides. He does, there is an existing office on the first floor, as you can see from that plan. And then the second floor, on page A2 of the plans, will have a bedroom for Mr. and Mrs. McGowan, and a bathroom, a, a kitchen area with a dishwasher and a sink, and refrigerator, and then a living area, as well as a desk, as you can see in the middle there, for Mr. McGowan's office use. This would not, this is, there's no intention to create a separate rentable area here. It's, he's not asking for this to be a, an accessory apartment, anything of that nature. It's not something that would be, would fit in, in that neighborhood, so to speak. So, this is, as I said to Mr. McGowan, this is the, this is the Waltons. This is the, this is families functioning the way they're supposed to function, that son and daughter-in-law are going to come and live with mother and take care of her, which is a good thing. So, Mr. McGowan happens to be a builder, and can propose this addition and construct this addition. Nevertheless, Mr. Chesley, Chesley saw fit to deny the application, as he has to do, and, and refer this to the Board of Appeals for a special permit request. So, we're here this evening pursuant to the bylaw to say that we have a pre-existing, non-conforming structure to which we are proposing to add habitable space, which is allowed under our bylaw by a special permit. In addition to that, as you know with the Gale case, we have an existing non-conformity to the, on the rear setback at 10.3. We're not seeking to intensify the setback, but we are intensifying the, the habitable area that is within the 20-foot setback. So, we're intensifying it in that respect. So, I would suggest that it's also falls within the purview of the Gale case, that if we didn't have, if we didn't conform to the, to the bylaw special permit conditions, that the Gale case could trump that and say, "Okay, you're intensifying an existing non-conformity." So, if the addition is allowed by this board, my argument would be that there would be, that addition would not be a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. It's on the, to the rear of the house. It would fill out, so to speak, this, more of the second floor area of the, of the dwelling, but there would be no substantial increase in noise, fumes, odors, congestion, or the like, or, or traffic. And I would ask that the board grant the special permit this evening for those reasons. Thank you.
Mr. Headestat?
I have no questions. I agree, I think it meets the Gale case requirements.
Mr. Crowell, let's see, square footage of the addition, total.
I'm going to defer to Mr. McGowan on that one.
It's roughly, oh, I'd say about 1,100 square feet.
That's up and down?
Oh, oh, no, the, the, oh, yes, the...
I'm looking at the proposed addition, which is 25 by half, is it 7.9? And the others, I don't know what the...
Yeah, so you got the, what I was considering, like the foyer, or the stair, the staircase,
Sure.
and then the upstairs. Yes, it's roughly about 1,100, somewhere in there. And, and as I said, we, he was right, he said, "We're not going after the accessory apartment." That has not, is not the deal.
Okay. The accessory apartment police usually don't show up after this is done. I have no questions, thank you.
I have no questions.
I have no questions. That was well, well put forward by Mr. Crowell.
Thank you.
Um, no questions.
No questions. Is there anything else you want to tell us, Mr. Crowell?
No, thank you.
Okay, do you have any witnesses you want to bring up?
No, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone, are there any public officials here who wish to be heard? Okay. Just doing my job. Are there any, anyone in favor, wish to speak? Anyone opposed who wishes to speak? Okay. What's the, what's the board's desire? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I will make a motion. Mr. Chairman, regarding case 2018-06, the board would hereby approve and provide the McGowan Family Trust a special permit to construct an addition into a, onto a pre-existing, non-conformal, conforming, single-family dwelling. His application is pursuant to the Code of Howatch, 325, Table 2, area regulations set forth in MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at Rabbit, Rabbit, Rabbit Run, MAP 4, Partial S1-30 in the RH-1 zoning district. The finding is for a special permit, has been granted as there is no new non-conformity being made or constructed, and there will be no resulting additional or substantial detriment to the neighborhood. However, the property, I think because of its location, it could be a major driving problem during the period of 30, of 6/30, the end of, end of June through the 30th, through the 1st of September in 2018 or 2019 during the construction, because the road is so narrow. And that there will be no landscaping during that same time, during that same timeframe.
Before we take one more step, I failed to close the hearing. So, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second?
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
With regard to Mr. Headestat. I understand that Mr. McGowan owns the property across the street.
Well, we can, we can ask him that question right now, because we haven't closed the hearing.
Yes, I'd like to just, we're, we're a little in flux. My mother just came out of rehab. So, the schedule is pushed, getting pushed along a little bit, because I, I was going to try to jump on and get some construction up. There is four houses down in the cul-de-sac. My father actually was the one that developed it back in 1960, 61. The, the case is that I would love to get it framed, the second floor framed up and get, get that squared away. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm very sorry, it's Mark McGowan. And I'm, I'm trying to squeeze it in, but I also don't wanna put my mother up and over there. She's, she's 90 years old, just as I said, broke her hip. Just got back out of rehab, and we're trying to work with her on that, so... But, also, I've really only got the two neighbors, and they're actually gonna be doing some construction this fall with, with me down the road, because they're doing some renovations, and someone's gonna do a new house and all that kinda stuff. So, it's really just the four, the four families down there. And I, I'm not sure if I, if we could have to say no construction, because as I said, it's just my two neighbors, and we're kind of swapping favors and stuff in the way of, you know, their, their houses are gonna be under construction in the fall, you know, and if, if I can get in and get the, the framing done, I'd really appreciate that, because I wanna get the roof tight.
Are you with a cul-de-sac?
Yes, we are.
Oh, so there is no through traffic?
There is no through traffic.
Is that...
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it's just, it's strictly, it comes off of Shore Road, and it's, and it's just a...
It's a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
It's just a four, a four-house cul-de-sac. And as I said, we're, we're just a tight little knit, because it's my, my house across the street from my mother's.
So, it doesn't stop the through traffic, except...
No, it does not.
Okay, I withdraw that exception.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried?
Thank you very much.
For this special permit.
Could I go back?
Please.
I had a motion first to close the public hearing, which we never did, and then that was the second for that.
Well, that's right.
Okay.
I'll ask the question. We have a motion, we'll have to do this ab initio. A motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The hearing is closed.
And we're just gonna reverse those votes?
Yeah, we're gonna reverse it, yes. Yeah. I hope nobody's listening or watching to thinking this is, this is gonna be a course in... It was fine, Mr. Acting Chairman.
Elementary procedure.
It did fine. Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck, yeah.
Oh, you know, I forgot to do this reference. You need to reference in the, in the approval, all of the documentation.
I shall.
I forgot to do that.
I do that on every decision.
She's right on that. We're all a little out of practice after a slow winter.
Sorry I let you down.
You don't need the wallpaper of the town hall.
Okay, do we have anything else on our agenda?
I have, I'm just having a couple of things on my plate.
Sure, please do.
Did you stamp that one?
Am I supposed to stamp something?
Yeah, you're supposed to stamp the plans. You need to stamp all the plans.
I knew there was, I, I knew my, being a Calcatran in my duties tonight, I'm gonna stamp everyone's hand at the same time. Just to show you, men here.
Alright, stamp those until...
I'll tell ya, that's cold. Makes me feel so good.
All of them, correct.
Every one of them.
And I'm glad you pay us so much.
I appreciate you talking, I appreciate your comment. Because things that's, you know, the building business. It's one of the things that, one of my pet peeves.
Absolutely.
They say all these builders, is they take up the street.
Right.
No. Is that when I get to the job site, I make sure all the guys pull up on the property, and so the through traffic, you get all the driving nuts. Especially because if you're on Shore Road...
Do what I do, for the ruins.
And it's like, come on, somebody...
Right, I know, I know, there's no room on some of those pla, I know, there's no room.
What do you mean, I almost, I almost waved someone on Shore Road. I came around that, you know, that nasty little bend there.
Right.
And sure enough, there is a big, you know, dump truck coming at me, and I'm like, oh, damn.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, thanks. Great, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Good luck, good luck. Your mother does well.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we're in that process right now, so, thank you very much.
Okay, the, I have three things. One would be a motion to accept the minutes, which everybody read and nobody had a problem with. Two will be...
Let's take care of that right now.
Yeah, let's do that.
There a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor, yeah?
With Mr. Capoli and Mr. Dunning?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The next thing, and we have our commissioner here. We had an issue we wanted to just bring up, that we are grateful in the Building Department for as much clarity...
I'm glad we finally got the public official to come forward.
As we are getting from the board where the special permits are concerned. Do you want us to say something?
Well, we would just request that you be as specific as you can when you give us direction. And, because I kinda draw the line at exactly what you tell us is what, is what we do. So, if somebody comes in afterwards with a change and says, "Okay, well, this is only a minor change," there is no definition of a minor change, for me, because it's gonna be different for everybody.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Right, yeah.
I've, I've never done that.
I am, in the first instance, inclined to send them back to you.
Yeah, right.
For, if there's, you know, an issue like that. So, I don't want, I don't want you... So I don't want, I don't want you to think that we're trying to make work for you, but, and you could kind of help that along as long as you're very specific about what you grant. And then I can follow it.
So would, is an example of this, would it be someone who came in and said, this is a minor change, and it would be a change to the plan of record?
It would be a change to the plans that you looked at.
And we approved.
And you approved.
And then get recorded at the Registry of Deeds.
Right. And so it was, and so, we had, I'll give you an example. We had an example where somebody came in and you approved a plan that had a skylight.
Exactly.
Okay.
Skylight, and she decided that she didn't want to put the skylight in.
But does a skylight require a Board of Appeals approval?
No, so we.
It's just the plans that you saw.
Okay.
Okay, so I, you know, in my mind, okay, that's kind of a minor change. It didn't really, it didn't really change very much.
That's not a dimensional change, right?
But then we had another permit that came from here that was for a foundation.
Yes.
And then the plan came into the building department with a second floor deck.
That was added to the plan.
I don't think, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know whether that impacted.
Well, it changed the footprint below.
Okay.
And so in our mind, in my mind, that was significant enough to be something different than what you granted. What you granted was to raise this house, put in a new foundation, and drop it down.
The same footprint, etc., right.
Okay?
Definitely.
So that's kind of where I draw the line.
Yeah.
But I'm probably drawing it on the, on the tight side here, so.
I agree.
I just want a little direction just so you know.
There are two kinds of changes that could be made. One change is that affects the decision we make on a special permit and/or on a variance. So if it has any impact, for instance, they say, look, we got a, we got a variance so we can go 21 feet to the side, but actually, we're going to go 22, we're going to go 19 feet to the side. That's minor. No, it isn't minor because that has to come back here. Now, we may be able to treat it as a minor and not have a public hearing to correct it. But I think that's a decision the zoning board would make. I mean, my, on the other hand, if it's a decision that goes to the, the feature of the house, a parapet here, or windows, instead of having three windows, we're going to go with two windows, I think that's clearly up to the building department, not up to us. I don't think that affect, the, the building plans they give us, I think only serve a purpose of having us look at, this is a nice building. But the only thing that's relevant to our decision is, is it side yard, setback? Is it height? Is it any dimensional requirement that we have to take into consideration to issue?
Footprint, right, yeah.
I would, I would agree. All those lists of things that the zoning board of appeal, I'm sorry, the zoning bylaw requires in that community, those can't be changed without coming back to the board. Aesthetics, I, I don't see why we, we don't deal with aesthetics. I mean, we don't, we can't approve somebody having three windows versus two or one. They want to paint the house orange and we can't argue that, so.
Well, unless we make, unless we do some, some things. We have done some things.
We can put conditions on, yes.
We've put conditions on about the exterior must match, etc., etc. We've done that. The other thing we have to be careful of is should they decide to, since only have two bedrooms and you get a two-bedroom septic system, the plan comes in with three bedrooms.
That's the.
That will also get caught when it goes through the health department.
That's something else we can, we got to, we got to check on too. But other than that, you know, you're right. I think it's dimensional and what constitute the.
I'm talking more, you're giving me good feedback here, more like footprint changes that affect the actual layout of a house.
Yep.
And let's just say that somebody submits a plan to you that doesn't include a deck, okay?
Okay.
And the deck is a, is a significant deck.
Okay.
Say, say 12 by 12 deck.
Sure.
On the back of a house.
Right.
But it's still within the setbacks.
Right. I don't, we see, we don't, I don't think we have authority to tell someone how big the deck is as long as it's within the dimensional requirements. The thing I think, well, it's basically what, what some people do. Now, the other thing which I think gets confusing is if somebody has a lot of land, they have a house on it, it's non-conforming. Let's assume it's non-conforming in areas, but they have a non-conforming rear yard, required to be 30, and theirs is 20. They give you a set of plans that takes it from 20 to 25, meaning they reduce the non-conformity instead of increase, they reduce it. That doesn't require this board's approval because it, reduction in non-conformity is up to the building department to approve it, doesn't require it. The minute they, they make it smaller, then they have to come here under the Gale case for a special permit.
So if they're making it better?
If they're making it better, like tonight, the gentleman was looking for the variance. Everything was good. He was, he was making non-conformity better, making it less non-conforming, except for the little issue with the variance.
Well, right.
Was there any non-conformity still left? The only non-conformity is the size of the lot. You don't need a special permit for that.
Right. You don't, we can't increase or decrease the size of the lot. No one can.
No, but the lot coverage is what you.
That's lot coverage.
Lot coverage, site coverage, the building.
That's right.
So when that's affected, yeah, that's why we sent that one to you.
Would you revisit that foundation that was mentioned early?
That was a house in West Harwich we voted on three months ago.
Was it that one?
It was, was Shore Road or?
It was, it was Ocean Ave, and I know, I didn't know how we wanted to get into specifics. And, and my feeling is anything in the campground, I think we have to be extremely careful about because those lots are so tiny that any change is going to bring, I think, needs to come back because they're all going to be within the setbacks.
Yeah.
And because the neighbors are so careful about looking to make sure that their neighbors are having plans that match what they were given in terms of their, a butters list, of their butters notice. A lot of those people come in, they look at the plans ahead of time and they say, okay, I'm okay with this. And then if that gets changed after the special permit.
That's right. If, but some of butters would be against something
No matter what.
That's not in our jurisdiction to say yes or no to.
I agree.
But if they ever come in and say, I'm okay with that, I, I can live with somebody being only 20 feet away from me. When it becomes 19 feet, it's a, it's a new ballgame.
Yep, yep.
Okay, no, that's.
I think that helps a lot. But then in our research for that, we came upon something that I don't think we've talked about.
At least I wasn't.
We didn't have a talk before. A granting of a special permit for a dwelling with an accessory apartment, which we haven't done a lot of, and a lot of those will, will go to the planning board. We did have, I think, on Main Street. It requires apparently, prior to the issuance of the special permit, a certificate in the form of a notarized affidavit to verify that the owner is or shall be in residence in one of the units. And that they need to come back with that every two years.
Well, you, we can, we can put conditions on special permits. We can make them for time. We give you this for two years or one year, and I have not seen this before, but.
So this is 32551, Section 11.
I can tell you all about this because this is what my house is.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just building an accessory building on the family property. So I had to do all this research myself. So worth noting, the selectmen's board has numerous times in the past spoken about how in favor they are of accessory apartments to vary the housing stock and make housing available to people, especially younger people who couldn't afford it. So the, you know, the selection are very, very much in favor of this. But these requirements and actions are not something that we supervise as the ZBA or even the planning board.
No, we don't supervise it.
They, you have to submit, I mean.
The zoning enforcement officer does.
Well, however, when we offer a special permit, and it says here, the granting of a special permit shall be conditioned upon. So when we grant as a zoning board of appeal, there has to be as part of that granting.
If it's an accessory apartment.
For an accessory apartment, exactly.
That guy wasn't asking for that.
No, 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 I'm just saying, this came up and we've never noted this before.
When you get the checklist from the building department, if you're, if you're going just to build an accessory building, it goes under the purview of the planning board.
Only if, only if the lot is conforming.
Right, right, okay.
If the lot is not conforming, it comes down to.
The old issue of the kitchen comes out.
For people who apply for that, you know, they have to get that notarized thing because I, I did that.
Not necessarily, is what we found.
Oh, really?
Well, we haven't been fully moved.
Oh, okay.
So now that, now that we're aware of it, we just wanted to put it out on the table.
Yeah.
Sure.
And, and so we will start that process.
Is it possible to go and check the special permit that had been issued?
Yeah, it's already, it's already, that's part of our bylaws. And there's no real.
Needs more help in the office for that.
Teeth to it, so far as I can see.
Well, I think the teeth.
No way, really? Oh, no wonder you're smiling.
The board could revoke the special. And then you have to take the kitchen out.
Yes, you would, yeah.
Yeah.
So our thought, I think mostly was that if we bring it to the attention again of the board, when we have an accessory apartment special permit before us and we issue one of those, that that could be something to make note of in our discussion. Are you aware that this is a part of this? And also in our condition, it is conditioned upon the owner living in one of the units and having a notarized note saying.
Well, they have to present that affidavit before we vote on it.
That's part of the package. So it shouldn't.
Part of the application.
It shouldn't come to our, our board without.
No, but it's every two years.
And then after that, the every two year.
On the application, though, is when you need that notarized piece of certificate. So it should just be part of the package. People should read the, having again gone through this myself, the, the.
But that's, that's the planning board application is very detailed. The special permit that comes with the zoning board of appeals is not.
People read the stuff just like they read their mortgage when they buy a house.
Where's the line to say?
No one reads it.
So it doesn't hurt to just stay aware of it anyway and mention it.
That's all, we just wanted to put it on the table, so everybody.
I'll remember. That'll be my thing.
I was hoping you would get up and say something because there's, nobody out there to speak.
Well, I mean, they seem to.
I don't mean now, I meant earlier.
No, I know, but I think they seem pretty, pretty straightforward.
Oh, I know.
You guys did a good job, so.
We tried.
I think the outcome was.
It was the Walton's comment that got me.
Is he not the funniest?
That sent me right over the edge. And then, of course, he's, he's deadpan.
He tries to be.
Well, he's very good.
Yes.
That's hilarious.
Anyways, okay. All right, well, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
All right.
Night. Thank you, Rick.
You have a third thing?